Good morning. We're here with Buck Holmes, who's a candidate for reelection to the Laramie County Commission. Buck, welcome this morning. Glad to have you.
Good morning, and thank you for having me, and I appreciate the ability to be able to visit with you and share this with the rest of the community. So, thank you for inviting me.
Great. For those watching later, I'm Brian Martin. I'm the managing editor here at the Wyoming Tribune Eagle, and I have a couple of community representatives of our board with us.
I'm Sharon King with Black Hills Energy.
Bob Fuch, Shana and the whole children.
Again, Buck, thanks for being with us. Let's get right started with what specific issues or concerns caused you to run for reelection this year?
Well, I think we have a lot of things going on, good things in the community here. Cheyenne is a vibrant, fast-growing community. I think a lot of that started when I became Commissioner, or during my first four years as Commissioner. I worked hard with Leeds and with the Chamber of Commerce and some of the other groups to promote bringing in Microsoft. We've just had, we've had stuff from the Wyoming Business Council. Magpul was a big one that came in, originally came in. They were supposed to have a couple hundred people now, and I think they're over 300. I was instrumental in that. We have some other things that we have in the background that we're working on that will help grow Cheyenne. I remember when Cheyenne, we used to worry about what we were going to have jobs for our youth, and now we are able, by the growth that we've had here in Cheyenne, we're able to retain some of those youth in our community. So, those are, I would like to continue to work on those things. I think one of the problems that we have, at least from the county angle, is that our infrastructure is getting older, and we're going to have to figure out some way to put some money aside to replace and refurbish, and in some cases, do away and completely rebuild. So, those are all things that I think are probably going to happen in the next four years. We've got some things that are going to be on the sixpenny ballot that we need a couple new pods in the jail. We have currently three district court judges, and we are, the state has allocated us four. So, we are going to need to remodel our courtroom, and during the same time, we want to study to see, as our community continues to grow, that we will be able to, county government is, the courts and the judicial system are going to crowd our space there that we have in Cheyenne. And so, we need to decide long-term where we're going with the jail and the judicial system, or where we're going with the rest of the county, whether we're going to move it out to Archer, enlarge downtown. Those are some things that'll be coming up.
Buck, can you tell us what qualifications you bring to the table that you feel make you a good Commissioner?
Well, I have been in the leadership role in a lot of organizations before I was ever a county commissioner. A friend of mine and I started the Laramie County Stock Growers, which is still growing. I was chairman of the Combined Planning Commission back in the early 70s. I chaired the committee that wrote the first Laramie County Land Use Plan. I was second vice president of the Wyoming Stock Growers Association. I was a member of the Wyoming Beef Council and also chairman of that. Most of my stuff until I became a county commissioner was agriculturally related. I was also appointed by two different presidents, first Bush and also Clinton in his first term, to be the sole representative from Wyoming to the Cattlemen's Beef Board. That's the board that does advertising and promotion for the beef industry. It's kind of Beef It's What's for Dinner group. And I've been on numerous appointed organizations. I was on the Wheaton past. I've been on just lots of different things voluntarily.
So, what do you believe is the biggest challenge facing Laramie County right now?
I think one of the biggest challenges facing Laramie County right now, among other things, is the economy. And it's not so much Laramie County's economy, but the economy statewide. The war on coal that has come from Washington DC, I think in some respects it's a war on the West, because it's not only coal, it's all carbon products, oil and gas are in this, and also water. Waters of the US is another one. And I think the, one of the main things that we have to do as a county elected official is to, when we have things that come down from the state or the federal government that are not conducive to us here, that are not good for us, that we need to at least let them know and do what little pushback that we can.
Can you name one or two other challenges that the county faces?
Well, the infrastructure, I think, is one. And growth is always a challenge. When you have more people coming in, you've got houses, roads, law enforcement, fire protection, all of those things have to be expanded.
Buck, I'd like to back up for just a second. You're talking about the state economy and the war on coal, et cetera. And you said that when we can, we should at least try to push back a little bit. I think Governor Mead has tried to do that, and I don't know that it's met with any success whatsoever. So, how would you, I mean, why or how?
I am fairly active in the National Association of, NACO, National Association of County Officials. I'm on the Agricultural Committee. One of the things that we pushed back on about three years ago, the EPA and the Department of Defense signed a joint memorandum where they would not allow surplus defense vehicles to be allowed to be given, for example, the Sheriff's Office, our volunteer fire departments, things of that sort. And I wrote an emergency resolution, which is pretty difficult to pass at NACO, that was passed unanimously by the Agriculture Committee. Then, the Environmental Committee took it and passed unanimously, and was passed unanimously by NACO. And NACO is fairly powerful in Washington DC. And with their lobbying efforts, and also, I think Senator Inhofe from Oklahoma, that memorandum was erased. And so, we are now allowed to continue to have those vehicles for local government. I think that's just one example of where I actually had a national impact. One of the other things that I did back there was I took on a attorney from the EPA on the Waters of the US, which was eventually abandoned, and I quoted to him chapter and verse out of a federal registrar, and pointed out that he was lying to us. And he admitted that he was lying to us, and kind of backed off of it. Eventually, the Waters of the US was killed, and then they have come up with another version of trying to control all of the water in the United States. That's just one place that I think I had a national impact. I also worked quite, or have worked quite closely at different times with Senator Enzi and Senator Barasso, with Governor Mead, and also with Cynthia Loomis on different things that affect the counties.
Buck, can you describe your vision for Laramie County?
Well, I would like to see Laramie County continue to grow at a moderate rate. I don't think we want to boom, but I think we need to have steady growth, and that will help provide jobs for our community. And that will also enable us, as government officials, to be able to help plan for the growth, and also be able to bring in the infrastructure that's needed during that growth.
What do you think the area needs to have that it doesn't currently have, and how would you make that happen?
Well, it depends upon who you listen to, what the area needs. I like it pretty much the way it is in a lot of respects. The, one of the things that we're lacking is that we need to try and have it vibrant downtown. And I think by doing that, that would attract a lot of the younger professionals. And Cheyenne is having a hard time right now with attracting some of the younger professionals. I do know that we have businesses that are based in Cheyenne that have had to open offices in Fort Collins or those areas in order to be able to get a hold of the younger professionals that they need to make their businesses successful.
Do you have an example or two of that?
I don't know that I really should mention any names on that. I think that's probably more proprietary to a business.
And what do you think it will take to achieve that vision of slow, steady growth, but keeping up with the infrastructure?
As much as I hate to mention this, I'm pretty much a conservative guy. But I think we're going to have to put some public money into downtown, either through grants or loans or some actual participation. I know we have some things going on now, for example, the attempt to redevelop the Heinz Building. And I think we're going to have to get some public money involved in that, whether it's through the Skyway or through some of the other things. We, in order to, for entrepreneurs to take the jump, leap of faith, shall we call it, in order to try and develop this area, they have to know that the governmental entities are standing behind them and support them. So, I think we really need to, as local government, put our money where our mouth is on occasion. And I know that's not popular with some segments of the area, but I think that, I think if we're going to continue to be a vibrant community, I think we need to do that.
Since you're talking about public money, sir, I know that, can we talk about the Children's Museum for a minute? Where you, do you think public money could, should be used for that?
Well, I have some of my own private money invested in the Children's Museum. I was probably one of the early supporters. For me, it's a fair amount. Probably for some people, it's not a lot. But I have supported the Children's Museum. I still support the Children's Museum. There is some debate about how it should be financed. Early on, it was to be a privately financed museum, and that's when I donated. I will give those people credit. They, in about six or eight months, did what the city of Cheyenne couldn't do in 10 or 12 years, and that was to purchase the other three-quarters of the hole from the California people. And so, at least we have the hole in local hands now. There are some problems as, if the Children's Museum is not financed privately, if you look at the contract that they have with the city of Cheyenne, in that contract, it says that it shall be privately financed. So, that if it is publicly financed, that either the city of Cheyenne is, is going to have to modify that contract, or else they will have to go someplace else. I guess I have some thoughts about that. I'm not sure that the hole is the most optimum place to put the museum, because if you have large busloads of kids or whatnot, you're going to have to offload them a block or two away and trail them up there. Also, if you have grandparents and kids, a lot of elderly grandparents, a block or two walk is not something that they do just for fun. So, I think, I'm a proponent of the Children's Museum. I think it's, will really be a good asset to this community. But I think there are some things in it that probably still need to be ironed out before a site is completely set upon, or how we finance it in the future. That still needs to be answered. And if it's publicly financed, I think it will be up to the voters, whether it's on the a quarter, seventh penny, or whether it's on the sixpenny spot tax. The Commissioners, as you're aware, by a four-to-one vote, recommended to the Children's Museum that it be placed on the sixpenny tax. And we did offer them a place on the sixpenny tax, and they preferred to go in November on the quarter of the seventh penny. And my understanding is they are attempting to raise enough signatures for a petition for that. And if they're successful in the petition, that's where it will be.
Was that a guaranteed position on the sixpenny, Buck?
A verbal guarantee. I can't, I know at the time that we talked to them, we stated that we would give them, they were talking around 20 million. The, our thoughts on the sixpenny tax, and in conjunction with the city, were that we'd do about 100 million. And we agreed, as county Commissioners, pretty much, that if they wanted to go on the sixpenny tax, we would put their museum request is for 20 million. And so, we would just put that on and above the other 100 million. And all I can do is speak for myself. I think that offer still stands, but I don't, I don't want to speak for the other four Commissioners.
While you're speaking about the sixpenny, can you tell us what your personal priorities would be for that sixpenny ballot?
Well, first of all, I think there are some infrastructure needs. There, the way it's split out, the city will get 45 million, the county will get 45 million, and the small municipalities will get that 10 millions, split among them about 5 million to Pine Bluffs, 2 and 1/2 million each to Burns and Alvin. I can't tell you exactly what the smaller communities are doing. I think probably most of it, they're going to put in the infrastructure. Our priorities are, in no specific quarter, a fire station out at Archer. This would be manned by a combination of Fire Districts 1 and 2, and it would be a station that would be manned 24 hours a day, and the county would not have to pay for any labor on that. We would put up the building, and Fire Districts 1 and 2 would furnish the personnel, and also the rolling equipment for it. The other one that is, another priority are the two pods for the jail, and also the remodel of the courthouse. And we're looking from 12 to 15 million for that. Right now, we have studies underway for those. We've done the study on the fire station, and we're in progress of getting the studies for the courthouse and the jail. And part of that study is to take a long-term look and, and see where we are going to be in the future. Like, do we, do we want to continue to put additional pods on the jail, knowing that most of it is structurally okay for, for the next 50 years? We're probably going to have to spend a lot of money on maintaining the mechanicals in it. Are we going to get to the point that, or when is, I guess you might say, is going to be the point that, that either the judicial, criminal judicial system is going to have to move to a larger area period, to keep it all together? Or are we going to move the clerk's office, the treasurer's office, the assessor's office, the county office, our IT to a different location, probably Archer, since we already own the land out there? And that's going to be part of what this study is about, and it's not completed yet. So, we'll wait for that. And we don't have the final numbers on that. The estimate is 12 to 15 million. And also, are we going to, when you have the criminal judicial system, you also have pressure on your district attorney and your public defenders. And those two areas are going to grow. So, those, that all, that whole, is all one big ball that continues to grow. From my understanding with the judges, it has moderated some in the last year or so, which we're glad to hear. And I think part of it has to do, when you get a bigger increase in population, you're going to have a few more people that you are not community-oriented. And then, I think one of the other things are proximity to Colorado, and some of the problems that are, have been in Colorado for years are coming up into, evolving into the Cheyenne area. Let's see, what else have we got?
Mr. Holmes, will you mention the fire district at Archer? And I'd heard a rumor that there was also the possibility that the fire district on Yellowstone Road might move?
Yeah, as you, you may not know it, but I was a fire, volunteer firefighter with Fire District 2 for about 10 years. And I was on the board for six years. In fact, I resigned when I was elected county commissioner. And at that time, we were even talking about, say, moving the fire station on District 2 over, and we've kind of backed that time, and I think the selection is still the same, is moving it over a little closer to the Horse Creek interchange, north of the Horse Creek Iron Mountain Road over in that state land, in that same area where the Prairie Wind School is, except further west. When the fire districts apply for a sixpenny tax, all of the fire districts, there is a, a meeting of all of the fire districts once a month, of all of the chiefs and whatnot. So, how they do to coordinate things is they sort out amongst themselves their priorities. And their priority has been the fire station at Archer, and then they have some requests for trucks from some of the other ones. The station at District 2 is still under review in District 2, but I don't know that they have ever brought it to the chiefs to have it brought up into the sixpenny tax. And I know that District 2 is, they have some money in reserves. I don't think they have enough for a new station, but they have a fair amount of money in reserves that they have put away towards the station out north. And, but it's not, one of the things, it's not a station that's manned 24 hours a day. All of the volunteers have to drive into that. So, you've got about a, anywhere from a five to a 15-minute lag time, whereas Station 1 and Fire District 2, which is on college, is manned 24 hours a day, mostly with students from LTRPC, and we also have some other, we have, I think there's two paid chiefs there and some other people. So, that is manned, and the, one at Archer will be manned 24 hours a day. And that not only helps Fire Districts 1 and 2, but it also helps 4 and 5, the Burns and the Carpenter ones, and shortens our time out to Fire District 3.
So, Buck, we have about 10 minutes left. What are your priorities for economic development, and what is, what is the Commission's role in that?
Well, I think we have the Cheyenne Leeds that has, is the leader for economic development. They've been around for a long time. They do a great job of it. They are very professional. And I think Randy Brun's probably said it as well as anybody, they can move at the speed of business, not at the speed of government. Anybody that's been in government knows that government does not move at the speed of business, whether, sometimes that's good and sometimes that's bad. But, so, I think we can, need to continue to work with Leeds. I think you're probably aware, the city and the county, each contract with Leeds for, as their prime economic developer. And at the job they've done, I think it continues. I have no qualms. I've worked with them very closely. I think they do an excellent job. And I see no reason to look anyplace else at this stage.
What are your budget and savings priorities as a Commissioner? I know there's, as you mentioned, there are budget pressures coming from the state, but you've got a lot of things to take care of in the county. What are your priorities?
Well, fortunately, the county has been very conservative through the years in their budgeting. And we also have good employees that seem to be very conservative. We are anticipating that out of our budget for 2015, 16, which we are, will be over with about the 1st of July, that we're going to have over $2 million rolled, be able to be rolled back into our 2016, 2017 budget. So, that really helps matters. And Laramie County's economy is different than most of the other counties in, in the state of Wyoming. We are not nearly as dependent upon mineral production or agriculture. Agriculture is a big part of Laramie County. I'm not putting it down, but if you go to Goshen or Platte, they're primarily agricultural counties. You go up to Natrona County, that's a mineral county. Campbell's certainly a mineral county. But Cheyenne, the number one employer in Cheyenne is Fort Warren Air Force Base, military. And then, you've got the Guard, you've got, you've got our refineries out there. And you also, the, our hospital is a big employer. They employ over 1,000 people a day. So, we have, then we've got the UP Railroad. We just have, we have Microsoft, we have Greenhouse, we have Magpul. We just, we have the Swan Ranch development out there that's brought numerous jobs. One of the, I think only three places west of the Mississippi, where the UP and the Burlington Northern, where you can change freight carts from one to the other. So, that's a big asset to it. The oil production, when it was big, was a very big help to Laramie County. I assume that it's probably going to ramp up again, not near as, as strong as it was. But I think slowly, it's, we get oil up to 50, 60 bucks a barrel. I think we're going to see some increase in production there. So, I think Laramie County, especially compared to the rest of the state, we, our economic outlook is really good.
So, on the spending side, what, what do you think are the priorities?
Well, I'm fairly conservative. Some people are not, might disagree with me. But our, I think our first priority, at least as far as I'm concerned, is to take care of our county employees. We have a lot of good employees, and those, those employees are to serve the people of Laramie County. And they, most of them do an extremely good job of it. So, we need to take care of them. Then, we need to continue to maintain our infrastructure. And as far as spending goes, I don't see any big, what I would consider big things, other than, than if the people approve our sixpenny tax projects. I think anytime you take your projects to the community and explain to them what they are to be used for and how the community can benefit, I think the community, we have a smart community here, and they will decide what our spending priorities are.
Buck, how do you balance the need of the rural parts of the county with the city of Cheyenne's priorities and needs?
Well, the city of Cheyenne, no doubt, it's kind of like sleeping with an elephant. No matter how friendly they are, every time they roll over, you have to be careful. But one of the things, since I've been a Commissioner, we used to always read in the newspaper about the city and the county having lawsuits. There hasn't been a single lawsuit in the last four years. And I think a lot of that has to do with the Commissioners that we have, and also with the city council and the mayor. You know, it, it makes a lot of difference when you can just call up the mayor on the phone and say, hey, Mayor Kason, we've got this problem. Let's get it solved. And, and we've been able to do that. And I think, I think the county has to represent the county residents. But however, it's like I tell Mayor Kason, he's my constituent, but I'm not his constituent. So, I think the city takes care of the city, and then the county, we have to prioritize. Whenever there's a major problem between the city and the county, we have to get those things solved in the best way for everybody. Most of the time, if you do it right, you can end up doing no harm to anybody. And if you really do it good, it can be win-win for everybody. That's what I like to do. I prefer to, to do that rather than to be confrontational.
Mr. Holmes, you're the current chairman of the county Commissioners.
Yes.
During your term as chair, you've attended almost all of the city council meetings, I believe. Did you do that before you were chair?
Yes. Yeah, I, when I was selected as a Commissioner, why, somebody mentioned, well, somebody ought to be a liaison with the city. So, I said, well, I'll do it. So, I started to, and I don't catch every one of them, but whenever I'm in town, I try to go to them. And I think that's really helped. I don't, I don't very often say anything, because I don't think it's the county Commissioners' business to tell the city council or the mayor how to run the city. But I do think it's helpful that I know what's going on. And quite often, after the city council meetings, if you've been there, I'll go visit with the mayor, some of the city council people. One example of this was Plan Cheyenne that was very in the news a lot back when I was first elected Commissioner. And we ended up working with the city council with Dickie Shaner and some of the other people from the city council, Amber Ash, and the Commissioners, other Commissioners and I. And there were a lot of stuff in Plan Cheyenne that were mandatory, and we worked together with all of them. And plans are supposed to be flexible, and they're supposed to be guides. So, we don't need all of these mandatory rules and regulations. And we worked together and, and ended up taking all of that mandatory stuff out of there, and ended up that they should be, showing that it should be a guiding path, not a mandatory path. Anytime you do a plan, it has to be flexibil, flexible. And if you have a lot of mandatory rules and regulations in it, use that flexibility. You, you need to make recommendations, but that's different than laying down a hard and fast rule. rule.
Buck, you mentioned amenities or bringing in, attracting young professionals. Besides the good jobs, what do you think amenities, what would amenities are needed to bring and attract those young professionals?
Well, I think probably the number one thing that we really need to concentrate on right now is trying to bring back the vibrancy to downtown Cheyenne. There was a 223 by the Wyoming Business Council a couple of years ago, and the number one priority of the chamber of leads, the commissioners, the city, and civic leaders was to bring back the vibrancy to downtown. So I think that's the number one priority that we need to do now. We need to do that along in combination with bringing in new jobs of other kinds. And there are only, for example, leads, there are only so many things that you can put into a downtown core area, because a lot of the businesses that want to come in, they need a lot bigger area. For example, Microsoft, they just purchased another 160 acres or 200 acres here a couple of years ago, so they could expand. And you can't put that kind of business downtown, but you can put some other kinds of things downtown that will revitalize its growth. For example, the rebuilding of the, or redoing of the Heinz, we have a developer that's interested in doing that. So I think we need to do all we can. He's talking about bringing 60 more jobs downtown. You bring 60 jobs downtown, what's that going to do to restaurants and whatnot? We can have a lot of Friday nights on the plaza and things like that. But we need to have things downtown that will bring people downtown in the daytime also to, to do business downtown. I grew up in Cheyenne, and I remember as a kid, the Heinz Building, my grandfather bank, that used to be the American National Bank. That's where my grandfather banked. We had a lot, well, at that time, we had pennies and Woolworths and all of those, where you brought people in. And we had jewelry stores downtown. We have none of that now. So we need to figure out some way to, and I think the Heinz Building is a key element, we need to figure out how to make downtown vibrant, not just in the evenings, but all day long.
Well, Buck, I think we've kind of reached the end of our time. Was there anything that you wanted to address that we didn't during our questions today?
No, I just hope that the voters have seen what I've done and approve of what I hope to do if I'm reelected, and thank you for the opportunity. And I'd like to thank the citizens of this community for the opportunity to be allowed to serve them for four years, and would like to do that for another four.